I can talk to both of us. Okay. Right, right. The way I did it, I got a microwave, so. You know what's going on, you don't have. And you don't have yours.
Unfortunately, it's like, yeah, right. So, not in the. So, pretty. So, you, you ladies, really nice to you.
Was it Chelsea? Yeah, I wish you would have.
I was in Eaton Rapids tonight, so it wasn't as bad as well. Had I not been in Eaton Rapids, I probably would have hopped on. Like, just a quick chat down ninety-nine and then.
That's the call.
I'm taking the highway back.
No, I know.
So, yeah.
There is no.
Right. No, no, I know. There weren't. I didn't see any deer on this tonight, at least. That doesn't mean I won't see them later, but. Yeah. We actually get, I mean. They're really bad in Borridge. Like, we have to do a call program because they're so bad. Oh, my gosh, like, we, they go through our, I've had to replace so many. Because they. Like, flip the top of the fence, jumping in.
Which mic do you want to use?
I guess this is close as well.
But this is.
Okay, very much. I wanted to say, I'll wait for it. I never saw it lying down.
It's, uh.
All right, folks, it is six thirty-one PM. I will go ahead and call our study session to order. If we can stand for the flag of allegiance, please.
Flag of allegiance, you are the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you have a cell phone, please make sure it's off and silent, please. Thirty-five, maybe go, you take your call first, please.
Councilmember Williams. Reed. Stewart.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Snyder.
And he's on mute, so.
CJ is online.
Yeah, yeah. You have to unmute yourself, CJ.
Hey.
I am here, counsel. Thank you.
Yep.
Can you hear me?
So, CJ's, uh. Joining virtually because he's not feeling well and didn't want to spread his germs to the rest of council. Luckily, this is just a study session, so there's no action to be taken tonight, so CJ, feel free to, uh, you know. If we can't hear you, just make sure you're waving your hands and we can see you so that you can get your questions answered. Um, so tonight, like I said, it's just a study session to, can you do the continued discussions on the budget? Uh, before we have to approve at our next official council meeting. Um, so I see our interim city manager standing at the podium, so I'll go ahead and turn that over to him.
Yes. Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you for meeting with us in this work session this evening. Um, as you know, we've held two work sessions, um, and previous meetings going over a budget, um, including general. Uh, fund. Major local streets, water and sewer, and some of the other, uh, funds. Tonight's meeting, um, when we ended up, we just plain ran out of time. And so we're going to discuss the last portion of our overall budget, and that includes the economic development. Um, efforts, um, with the EDC and its director, and of course, our interaction with that. In your agenda packet, um, in front of you is the various funds of the EDC, and in a moment, we'll ask Virgie to come up. And explain some of the highlights. And in the meantime, there has been limited, uh. Exchange, and only because of time, um, between the departments and, uh. Virgie's office, so. Uh. Again, I think maybe there's a little bit of anxiety, and there shouldn't be. What we're going to do is we're going to take a responsible approach in looking at this budget, and, uh, we. Certainly do endorse. EDC's efforts in trying to promote the city of Albion and all of its efforts. And to make our city. Competitive against with other cities. So, at this time, uh, you have a budget in front of you. We welcome any questions or comments. Some of those specifics probably can be best answered by Virgie and probably by David, um. Because he's our finance director and has. Decades of experience. I didn't want to say that, but. We here, so we want any questions or comments you may have, and, um. Please.
Councilman French, Mayor Potam French, sorry.
Whatever. Uh, thank you. Um, so the, the biggest concern I have is that, uh, the differential between, um. What was placed in our budget, uh, in twenty twenty-four versus reality, and what is being requested, uh, from the city, uh, through state and federal granting. Is a four million dollar, uh, four million one hundred ninety-two thousand dollar state grant. I'd like information about what that is. Uh, likewise, I'd like an explanation of the four million dollars in professional services and what does that all entail? Um, and how we're going to, uh. You know, what grants are we writing that are going to equal four million dollars and, and what those contractual services? Are we providing at four million dollars per year?
Okay, so, uh, and I believe this has been corrected already, um. As far as. Let Virgie explain, but, um. A lot of times, there's a lot of overlap in fiscal years. We talk to state agencies that run a different fiscal year than ours. We run a calendar year. Most cities run July first through June thirtieth. State of Michigan runs, um, October first through September thirtieth. And so, a lot of times what ends up happening, we're told verbally and sometimes through emails that, hey, you've really got a good shot at this. Keep pursuing it. Do all the things you need to do to line it up. You get a feeling that in anticipation that we're going to get this money. However, the Department of Treasury rules when it comes to budgeting. It has to be specific, and it has to be right on target. You have to have some type of documentation such as a letter of award or grant agreement. To formally put in place those figures. Um. My understanding is, in talking to Virgie a little while ago, is that, um. This has been somewhat correct, and I should probably let her explain this a little bit in more detail.
Oh, thank you, and, um, I. It sounds as if we're starting with the EDC budget, and then we will make it through the fall four, right? Okay. Uh, so I was gonna go Brownfield first, because I thought it was gonna be easier, but I'm happy to start with the EDC. And the question you have is really from twenty twenty-four, not twenty twenty-five.
No, it's also twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
That's the one we're requesting.
Okay. So. Um. So, the EDC board approved a budget. Which was then submitted to council for review and approval. And then my understanding is the EDC board cannot adopt that budget until after this, um, body approves it, so I do appreciate. You taking the time to review this and make sure that it's, uh, it's going to work for everyone. Um. So, on the. On the twenty twenty-five, there was a requested amount of four thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars for state grants.
Four million one hundred ninety-two thousand.
Four million one hundred and ninety-two thousand. And I have the list of what that was. I just have to find it in an email here. So I was asked over the weekend to review this budget and also review a new budget that was prepared out of the city's office. So I did do that, and I did provide some feedback. So, in that four thousand one hundred and ninety-two thousand dollar number is. For twenty twenty-five is three hundred and ninety-five thousand, in my hope. Two hundred and seventy-two thousand in my neighborhood. Those are grants. Two point five million of SSRP, which is my site's money from the state of Michigan, that we anticipate receiving. Um, as soon as they get their, um, budget straightened around. They could not, but this quarter. Because of the turnover in the legislation, so they were not able to get that money online, but that money will be available, um, in first quarter, if not second. And we do have an email that I sent over to the city manager indicating that they said, please keep going. We just can't do anything until the legislation gets settled, and I don't believe they take their seats until the middle of January, so.
So we.
So that is, I'll just finish, and then you can, um. I, I get, I get it. Lots of questions. So the two point five million would be from, um. Some of this addresses things that are really better handled in closed session at the EDC level, but I'll just continue here, so. Um, two and a half million for the park that we're trying to develop, and that is a part of the infrastructure. Um, the twenty-five thousand would be match on main, which we would only be able to apply for and receive if we have straightened out the RRC. Certification, but I, I'm convinced that city manager, um, Terry will see that that happens, and so we will be eligible for that money. So I do pray that that will happen. And then, uh, the other is a million dollars, and then there's, um, there's a list of the million dollars that we have been working off of. That, um, contains everything that we have been board approved to apply for. So there are EPA dollars for about two million. There are, um. Uh, change management dollars the state is looking to deploy for about a million. Um, and I've got another list of those together. All of those other items that could fall into the million are about five million dollars. There's also a Mischda collaborative grant. That has been, that we have applied for, and that would help to build, um, some, some things in the city. To help with, um, housing collaboratives. And then there's another two million that we applied for from Mischda. That would be, um. For, uh, the Norfolk. Uh, Norfolk Homes Project on Watson Street and Pine Street. Now, that two million, we. We'd like to believe we're gonna win that, and I believe pretty strongly we're gonna win that. Um, that will be announced either at the end of this month or at the beginning of next month, and we would only want to recognize a million because we only want to utilize a million. So, the, so that is what it's in the four point one nine two, so very definitive on the first four. That million is made up of. Um, an estimate that's rather conservative, considering it's probably represents about five million dollars of asks that have been processed. But, um, we don't have the answers from yet, so those have all been submitted and we're waiting, so, um, that's where the four point one nine two came from.
And then, and then the contractual services, four million is based on you winning those grants, which we've not been guaranteed yet, and then you would just spend. That would be all spent from those grants, correct?
Well, the, the, my hope and the, my neighborhood, of course, we've already been awarded.
Right, but that's, that, those collectively represent six hundred thousand dollars.
And it's not even in that contractual line, so I was, I was just gonna say. That isn't in the four million contractual line, because that contractual line does not include the, the housing grants, because David's given us a separate account for that. So that, so that does not count in.
So what is?
So, so the two point five and the twenty-five thousand and the million.
So that's three point five five, not four million.
Okay.
So, I'm just, I just want to make.
I'm happy to make that change.
Well, I, I'm, I'm not happy that we are, you're putting in a budget money that isn't. Given. It's applied for, but it's not given. And that's the concern, right? So when I, when I manage grants at the college, I did not. Plan for grants coming in until I got the award letter, and so until we have the award letter. It never went into the budget, so I'm wondering, um. Again, based on what you, what we approved of a budget in twenty twenty-four versus reality. I mean, it just seems irresponsible that. That we are putting in this, these big numbers. If we're not gonna get them.
So the two point five million dollars we didn't receive in twenty twenty-four was an EDA grant. That's a federal number. And they did push us off on that and asked us to wait until the end of this year to apply, because the money would become available, so we did. Put it in the twenty twenty-four budget, because at that time, they, they had asked us to apply, but we did not get land control over the piece of property we were gonna utilize that in. So they asked us to wait, so we did, and I, um, it's by understanding here that we typically only do of an amendment to the budget in December. So, I probably knew that amendment was coming months ago. Six months ago, when they said, push it out, but I didn't bother sending that amendment over, because we, we haven't done that in the past. If we're going to adopt a practice of amending on a quarterly basis, for example, so that we can. You know. Kick in something that might happen. Um, I'm, maybe that's a new process for me, and I'm happy to abide by that. Um, so, there, I have to have some strategy to be able to demonstrate what our intentions are. Based on board expectations and all the work that we're doing. So, how, how can we document what the intentions are and then have, have, so we don't spend the money if we don't get the money? And that was in, like, every year I write a budget memo. And that was in last year's budget memo, that if we don't get this money, we don't spend that money, and that's why I, when my, when I wrote the budget amendment for the EDC. I pushed back on two point seven million of. Two point five million of revenue, and I pushed back on two point seven of expenditures, so I actually added to, in, in the budget amendment I wrote for twenty twenty-four, I actually added two hundred to the bottom line. Because we didn't get the two point five, and we also didn't spend the two point seven, so give or take, it, it came out in the wash at the end. Um, because we didn't get that grant, and we also didn't spend the money. But I'm, I'm in, I'm happy to know of the methodology that we might employ as we, maybe quarterly, we can look at these. Because our growth right now is substantial and exponential. And so we're building on a, a lot of things that have happened in the last twenty-five years, and suddenly this year, we were able to move forward on a lot of that, so. We are kind of building the ship here as we fly it, and I'm happy for any feedback, and Dave's been really good at, at looking at some of the numbers, like when we get to the BRA and the TIFA. He made some, you know, small adjustments that are more accurate, but, um, that's, that's where, that's where I came up with those numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Good, so, so who can answer, um, how do we handle the budget? I'm interested in this, uh, from the DDA standpoint. We have similar things where we're thinking about grants. And, uh, we don't know, I don't know, should we be trying to put those in the budget, or should we wait until we've got the award letter in hand, as Mayor Potam French said?
Good governmental accounting standards would indicate that, oh, it's a sure thing. That's what you, that's how you budget. Budget very conservatively. Almost the worst. And hope for the best. And that's somewhere in the middle. You have. Where revenues have to meet expenditures and vice versa. So. If you ask Dave and any other city, this is the approach that all cities have to take. Is by the Department of Treasury governmental accounting standards. And this is how we budget. Um, we try to come as close as we can, um. I understand the strategy that she's trying to employ is that she's anticipating. To do things, because you're trying to play, keep up with the state and federal government. However. At the end of the day. We have to make sure that our budget will stand the test of audit. And that means that we have to have. Things that are for sure and in place. To make sure that we're accurately reflecting. Monies coming in and monies going out are balanced.
So it makes sense. Thank you, um, and a follow-up question, and so, and, and, uh. Um, Director Ammermans did ask a similar question, so. So like, again, on the DDA, when I, if we're looking at grant money, which we don't have, but we're hoping that maybe we can get it, then what is the process for, uh. Amending a budget to reflect our known numbers?
So, a lot of, a lot of municipalities do three amendments. They do one, um. Halfway through the year, and then at least one at the end of the fiscal year. That's a standard practice. So that by the end of the fiscal year, you're, you're showing that, um, what the real, what the realities were. Did you get the grant? No, then you need to. Balance your expenditures to reflect that. And vice versa. If the grant comes in, and you spend some of that, you need to reflect your expenditures. So at least two times in a fiscal year, you are amending your budget. And remember, budgets are a management tool. It helps keep us in line with. The next twelve months of spending. Taxpayers demand that. They want that accountability. It's a good management tool for council to also focus in on, well, how, how are things going? Are people paying their water bills on time? Are they paying their taxes on time? I mean, it's just a good, good. Good thing to do. Now, as far as taxes, we know what we're gonna take in. Why? Because the board of review and the assessor gives us a form called an L forty twenty-nine that has our taxable value on it. We give that to the county treasurer. She helps print out the tax bills, and that's what the revenue on taxes are gonna be. Other things are, have variables, and that's why we call them enterprise funds. There's like water and sewer. Those funds are a business. We're supposed to run our water and sewer departments like a business. And so, people are always gonna use different amounts of water. So our revenues are gonna be a little bit different. They're gonna, we might have a drought one year, or another year, we might have a flood, where people aren't using as much water. So there's variables in, in those funds. So we try to use as. As many facts as we can to gather in, so we have accurate forecasting in our budget. And again, a budget is a management tool, but. The difference with forecasting in the private sector is they can have that flexibility. In our particular case, we can't. We have to have concrete documentation that we expect monies to come in. And we have to have it in writing. That's the bottom line to this whole thing. We have to have documentation. That is the responsible approach. In government, so. And it's set forth by the Department of Treasury.
And, and just trying to clarify, then, when, when are amendments acceptable, and how do those, how do those get introduced and pushed through the process?
You can, you can. You can amend the budget anytime. There's no, but usually the standard practice is halfway through and toward the end, um, of that fiscal year, so.
So I, I hear you, but I also hear that we've got a lot of stuff in the air that we're trying to. To leverage and take advantage of. We don't want to miss out on those opportunities for the city.
And we encourage, um, aggressive grant writing. We really do, and she's, Virgie and her team have done an excellent job in that regard. It's just that when we take an approach in adopting a budget, we have to have. Concrete, substantial information to go by, and those numbers presented in the budget have to be supported with that documentation.
So you are saying then that, and when a grant is received, and then it makes sense to do the plus and the minus side of the budget as an amendment, that an amendment can be brought forward?
That's correct.
Uh, Dave, was there?
When you were saying, when you receive the revenue for the grant, it's not necessarily when you receive it, it's when you're awarded.
Right.
Grant.
Right.
That's when we want to book sets. Because it's been awarded. We know we're gonna get it. We know what we're gonna spend it for, and we know how much we're gonna end up with if we get some money for administering it. So we try to take the approach of. If we know we're gonna get it, we're gonna budget for it. If we hope we're gonna get it, we're not gonna budget for it. And again, if it comes in, that's a good thing, because it's over the revenue that we, that we originally budgeted. So at the end of the year, we will amend it. The reason why we do a projected column. Is because when council approves it at the very end of all this. The projected numbers become the new budget for twenty twenty-four. Because we're trying to. Get the budget as close as reality by projecting where we're gonna be at year end. The first original budget is like throwing a dart, but we try to make it as close as we can based on what we know, but not on what we hope is going to happen. And then when the year goes on and we end up in October, we've got a good idea of where we think we're gonna be, so we project where we're gonna be. And then, one. Uh. Bang of the gavel, it's approved, and then we amend that twenty-four budget to what we have projected. And then we also use those numbers to figure out where we're gonna be in twenty twenty-five, plus. What were, what we've been awarded. New projects, that form I gave you last week that had fifteen projects on it, the last two or three were not awarded yet. We hope we're gonna get them. But they were not on the budget, because we haven't been awarded them yet. So that's the approach that we try to take. I can answer any other questions.
Yeah.
Counselor Davis.
Just on a practical sense, when the budget is approved. It is with the understanding that an amendment will occur as needed. Or does the language need to state, uh, with possible amendments or something like that?
Um.
How do you meet the criteria of approving the budget, but realizing that amendments may be needed?
Uh, you always realize that there are gonna be amendments to the original.
Okay, so that's.
Here, we do them at year end, but we could change that, and we could do amendments twice a year. Because there's a lot of amendments. You don't want to amend every other week.
Right.
It's just too much, all right? But that's why we run those projected numbers two months before year end, and we figure out where we think we're gonna be, and then once it's approved, then those become the. The original, or the amended budget. But that can easily be done halfway through the year. If we wanted to adopt that. We could amend whatever's needed at that point, and then finish it up at year end. We could do two amendments. But we don't want to get into the practice of amending the budget every other week, because somebody wants something or we've gone over. It's just ridiculous. It's too much to keep track of.
Counselman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, David, earlier in the year, when we, um. Facilitated the purchase of that different equipment, um, over a million dollars in purchases, did we, at that time, also make budget amendments? Being that we had different pots that the money was coming from?
Yeah, uh, we did if it was, uh. For a fund that was not an enterprise fund or internal fund.
Cemetery.
Because some of the assets that we buy for the water and sewer and the equipment fund, which is an internal service fund. The water and sewer are enterprise funds or run like businesses. They're for-profit funds. And so there are certain assets that we buy that we set up in the balance sheet, and we depreciate over time.
Yeah.
So you'll see that. That fund will make money that year, because understanding that that money was spent to buy equipment. Put up in the balance sheet. It's not expensed that year, and we depreciated. And we depreciated over time. Equipment is like over seven years to ten years. The big sewer plant that we're putting together, that will be over forty years when it's completely done. Um, there's other assets. Now, if we buy assets for, say like the, um, um, street funds or a special revenue fund, those get expense in the year incurred. They're included in the expense because they're a general fixed as asset account group fund. But the three funds that we don't expense during the year, one hundred percent are the um, enterprise funds, the water and sewer and the internal fund are the internal service funds, which is the uh, uh, equipment fund. But the equipment fund purchases most of the equipment. And then it rents it out to other funds as they use it. That's how they make their money. And that's how we keep track of the equipment. We service it in the building that we have and everything's right there. But there's certain times when a piece of equipment will be purchased and it's only used for the cemetery. Cemetery will, will purchase that. It'll be expense in the year that we bought it. It won't be set up and depreciated. But when we buy equipment, that's gonna be used all over the city. It'll be set up in the equipment fund. It'll be depreciated over time. That's how we write off the expense. But in the year that we buy it, we either gotta have some money transferred in to cover it, or we gotta go out and get loans to cover the cost.
And at the transfer in time, that's when we make the budget amendment?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Perfect.
Yep. Because that transfer in or out will be shown in the appropriation expense columns or in the revenue section as a transfer in or revenue as a transfer out for expenses, so appropriations.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Director Clark?
Oh, um, again practically speaking, um, so last day in January, we are awarded by Mishra three million grants. My intention would be to avoid that. And the reason I ask is I might get awarded that and I might, it might be reimbursable or it might be the money comes in or whatever. But I don't have any authority to spend that because it isn't in the expense side. So operationally, um, if, if you look at the budget that you could see more approved, you could call it a stretch budget. You could call it a planning budget. You could call it what we hope to have. I fully support if council doesn't approve that because of the current treasury, um, procedures. I'm looking for guidance on how quickly you could get a budget done until I can act on that award. And then the second question I would ask is, um, it makes me think that this is a good time to collaborate on the question for my hope in my neighborhood, which we have been awarded. And that money will all come in. Should I have put all of that in the twenty twenty-four budget and then show all that as revenue in twenty twenty-four because it's all coming in? But I haven't experienced the expenses yet. That's a reimbursable grant. So if you get a reimbursable grant, do you still report all the revenue on the award date or do you wait until you've spent it?
Uh, that's a lot there. Um, so, um, for this year, we're gonna have to set up, based on the budget that I put together, some due tos, do some receivables from the federal government and from the state government to show the revenue that I have put in because it hasn't all come in at twenty twenty-five. So if you anticipate revenue for twenty twenty-four that comes in twenty twenty-five and you know it's coming, you've been awarded it and you want it to relate to the expenses you spent in twenty twenty-four, then we would just accrue it on the balance sheet and show that revenue.
So, um, so my hope is the better part of land, but conservatively, you only want to report the portion that we've spent.
No.
No.
You say you have a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars coming in.
That, that's my neighbor.
Yep. And that is gonna be shown in twenty twenty-four.
Even though I don't have offsetting expense. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm just clarifying.
Yep. If, if it, if, 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 if you're getting the one eighteen in, you must have offs, offsetting expenses because if it's a draw, it should be shown in twenty twenty-five because you haven't spent the money.
Okay, so then to the, so instead of, my, I have it clear in my head. If you get awarded a grant, but you're not ready to experience all the expenses, you don't report that revenue.
You would record that revenue if you had expenses that could substantiate recording it in the same year.
So if you got.
So otherwise, the only, the only other way to keep track of this would be like a debit receivable so you know you've got your money coming someday in like a third account. So it doesn't get the eco statement.
Correct. So when you get your hundred and eighteen in, you're telling me that you haven't spent the money yet. It's a draw. If you spend some of the money or anticipate spending the money in twenty twenty-four, we will show part of that one eighteen in twenty twenty-four. The rest will go to twenty twenty-five because that's when you're gonna expense the other part of the.
So I don't disagree with that. Then my hope, we have spent, so my hope is the same way. We took a fifty thousand dollar draw and then we took a two hundred thousand dollar draw. And because we're agree with this, we just got the money, we reported all that revenue. But what should have happened is that should have went to the balance sheet. And then as we experienced expenses, we, you would have helped make a difference for that. So, so would it be right between now and the end of, when you vote on this to reconcile my hope, my neighborhood and chill, Russ, it's just the admin piece and make sure we have reported revenue to the extent of expenses and then book a receivable, I guess, to defer so that we can keep track of the other ones.
Well, right now you have two hundred and fifty-one thousand. Do you guys got my budget?
Yep.
Yeah. So you have two hundred and fifty-one thousand and some change. I'm assuming it's to my hope.
It's the revenue.
Uh, and revenue.
What I'm, what I'm asking is, would it?
No, no, this, this will explain it for you if you just give me a chance. And so I have budgeted five hundred ninety-one thousand six seventy as revenue. Because when I look down here to your department for my hope grant, that's what you have budgeted to spend before the end of the year. So it's a wash. What you spend.
Spend not much, but even if you're, to be.
Yeah, but that.
This is why we have the.
Right, but this is, this is what you anticipated and your budget was.
And, and we didn't accomplish that yet. So, um, again, I wrote this a month ago and as it seems now, we didn't get that projected target.
All right, then that should be lowered. And when that is lowered, then the grant on top will be lowered.
So I'm just suggesting maybe we should threaten each other to between now and next Monday, make sure we have agreed, um, the revenue and expense side based on the my hope and the my neighborhood. If we have spent money, we need to make sure we recorded that much revenue. And if we have drawn in your money out of my hope, then we've actually spent, then we would want to put some of that back into the, um.
Right, so if you want to do that, you can take my budget, change the numbers, change the grants, and you'll be right on the money.
So.
Because right now my budget is exactly what you have budgeted for expenses. So it's a wash. But if you're saying that you're gonna not spend five hundred ninety-one thousand for the my hope grant by the end of the year, then you just gotta change that number to what you think you're gonna spend. And then we change the number of the grant. Does that make sense?
So you take the five ninety-one out of the two twenty twenty-four projected, move that over to twenty twenty-five request?
If she.
If she doesn't spend it.
Right.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But right now this is what she budgeted for, so that's what I went with.
Yeah.
CJ, are you following? This is on the second page of the, the sheets that says calculations of eleven thirty twenty-four.
Yeah, so it's Department, uh, seven thirty on the second page of Fund two forty-four. So that can easily be lowered. And if it is, then that grant will be lowered. Same thing when you go to my neighborhood. She's told me that she's gonna spend four thousand seven seventy. And so I have, and that grant of five ninety-one six seventy, I have four thousand seven seventy to cover that. She also wants twenty-five thousand for the, um,
Match on Main.
The match on Main. And so I set up a new department. She hasn't spent nothing yet. But she gets it in and, and if she doesn't spend it, but I projected that she's gonna spend it because if you're gonna show it, you gotta spend it.
So.
And if it's not gonna happen, then we move that twenty twenty-five.
So is it possible to give in an Excel form the most up-to-date information so I could put, or I could do the best I can to re-project and.
Sure, sure.
And then the match on me, I can send you some information. I know you'll know. Um, all that activity, brand, visitor, dog, and home fund, private assembly, we have their own, in the EDC. So I, that's, I can do much.
Yeah, I can do that. That's just another thing. Yeah, it, it shouldn't be in there so we can easily move it before the budget's um, adopted. But yeah, whatever you want me to do for you, Virgie, I will do it. Any more questions?
Councilman Williams.
Yeah, um, I just want to say I definitely appreciate you guys working together on this. I know for the EDC handling these grants, um, and ex- expending the funds that have come in to help with the local community. I know it's something that we haven't done previously, so we got going pains going through the, uh, the actual accounting of it all and making sure that everything is shown in the way that it's supposed to. So I definitely just appreciate you both, um, working together collaboratively to attack this as we address the community's issues going forward. Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure.
I just have another practical question for Virgie.
Councilwoman Davis.
Yes, um, um, Miracle Tim, um, actually, yeah, Andy, uh, mentioned and I, I was, as I was looking across in terms of professional services, what were you thinking? What are you thinking for, uh, for Marion?
I think kind of over that, but I've had to do that.
Yeah, I, I missed it.
Right, so if, so I had originally budgeted, um, the four points on maximum state remands. And then the two point five and eighty-eight grand. And if those were to come in, we would need to start spending money out of those grants.
Okay.
So I included the total amount of the grants requested and then I was thinking, hey, if something comes in halfway through the year, we're not gonna get all that spent, so I'm gonna spend the last, um, couple came in. Now, if the budget, so first of all, it sounds like none of those numbers are going to be in the budget. So I believe Dave already abstracted all of that from his version. And I think what I'm hearing is we're gonna go with this version and you all will approve a budget that he will be able to recommend to you and then that will come back to the EDC as what they are allowed to utilize. But I don't believe that four million will be there and one of the, the revenue that I've judged to be there.
Okay.
So I think that'll be a good point for this.
But, uh, Councilwoman Williams, she had another question?
Yes, um, and it's off the EDC topic, so if y'all wanna stay here, I can wait.
I just, I just wanted, thank you. I just wanted to follow up. I, I would hope that, that we're not gonna accept Dave's budget as written, but that a cooperative collaborative week will result and you'll end up with numbers that are that are a, a joint effort rather than, you know, sort of coming from, you know, the city itself. Cause the board will need to be involved. They'll have to be approving this. And so I would hope that that collaboration would, would be real and, uh, and we can move forward.
I don't think it's a bad thing for professionals who is willing to.
Right, right. No, I understand that.
So that's all I'm saying. That part will be fine. I think Dave's done a great job with the brownfield and the Tocco with some very exact numbers. Where I was still using problems pretty low, I think. It's not sustainable, but I think he did a great job repairing the brownfield and the Tocco and all about the budgets. And then the EDC is going to take what they just sort of hit because we're not going to demonstrate those things we're planning for. I believe that's what I'm understanding. And then, um, again, I hope that we could have exceeding budget amendments because if we don't have budget amendments often during the year, I don't have the ability to spend. Because when we remove the revenue and the expenses, I can't hire anyone to do anything, even though I have the grant or the catch. So I'd be go, maybe even totally, somebody can say you have enough to warrant budgeting because we're, right, the things that are happening are happening so fast, you can barely watch. So, um, I know, I, I just pray that it'll be early and often budgeted.
All you gotta do is come to a council meeting and tell us.
I understand. I just don't want to be overwhelming to everybody's direction.
Councilwoman Williams, she had another question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Start to come through the board first because the board would be very, very. But they, so the process is, the board only needs one some month, so process takes a minute to get on their opinion and suggest amendment. I'm very, the finding said, now again, he doesn't have time to budget amendments every day, but try to be.
And her city manager?
Yes. The process is, is that if something should come up, her office needs to let the city administration know so we can make those changes. The city administration is responsible for bringing those changes to you for final approval. I need to make that quite clear.
Absolutely.
The city administration by charter is responsible for presenting and administering this budget with your review and approval. And I think it's important that that process be stated and well-recognized by the public.
Thank you.
Councilman Williams.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, David, has, I know there's been conversation around, um, the Arts Commission and helping to fund the Arts Commission's board, um, was that noted in the budget at all?
Yes, she asked for eight thousand dollars to split in our sixty-six of the variable fund.
Okay. Yep, I got it. Perfect. Yeah, um, okay. I got you. Um, page twenty-eight of the general. Yeah. You know what I need to straighten is? Yep, got it.
What page is that?
It's page twenty-eight of, um, the general fund.
Okay.
Then it's, um, the ALB Arts Commission grant. If you scroll down a little bit to eight sixty-nine.
Yep.
Eight sixty-nine.
Yeah. Great recall on that, too.
I was talking with people and Scott probably and I were collaborating on, that was the summer, um, summer, and I know that the three of us that come together and Scott sent out our budget, um, I reached all was not as good as stages. Uh, I'm thinking it was twenty thousand dollars or something similar. I could look it up. But that was, Haley had promised to try to get that into this year's budget. So we would have some funding from the city to help support, um, employment, like these employment programs. So I know several years in a row, we talked about a youth employment program, but funding is a question. And so there was a discussion we should mainly get Scott and I, and the recommendation was she was gonna bring that to account. That part of the budget. I don't know that, you know, change of the guard, that that ended up showing up anywhere, but I would spend the vacation power. It'd be awesome if we could have summer employment program. And that might be the same money that get something started. And I'm happy to send it over. I just, I'm, I just did not think about it for a second. And so it was something we were kind of.
Okay.
Um, nearly mentioning that, but.
I can find the email access over.
Oh.
It was. Uh, presented in its final format at our next council meeting for final adoption. So any changes that we need to make um should be done before the next council.
So just wanted to. Youth employment uh program is fantastic. Yeah, uh, do you, are you applying for other funds? Because twenty thousand dollars probably won't cover all of the expenses.
So the what it covers isn't, so what it covers is the gap between. What an employee employer might.
Oh.
People to pay, what it probably makes it work getting out of that work. So the the concept was that it's a shared funding model between the employer and the municipality trying to get the program back.
Right.
Now, with the UGRC program that the EDC is putting together, which is an all-around. Funding model for workforce development, this would totally dovetail under that in the future. So again, this was a brainstorm after, I mean, several years of meetings, listening. We have summer youth program, and this was what Scott and Haley and I came up with. So they have, but they have some budgets for like some background services that might help somebody get get there. They might have money to help somebody with some gas money. They have programs depending on the age group of the person. So fifteen-year-olds, really hard to support that. Like the funding, the funding, rated funding doesn't fit. The sixteen to twenty, like, here's some money that would help that group. But it almost never covers the actual amount you're paying the student. So that's why that the employer should be willing to pay a certain amount. But to be, to incentivize them to do this, and maybe have someone come in that doesn't have the. Proficiency, doesn't have the effectiveness, is still learning, um helping with that extra twenty thousand to help cover. The the across the board to make, and I don't, and I can't remember how many people it was. So you would have a really big robust program, but you have a program. And so um, rather than, you know, Jim decided he wanted to try to hire a student. Um, and he had background services come and this and that, everything, but but still, you know. Maybe not in a position to pay this much wage, which wouldn't be appropriate. He would pay this much on the grant, the twenty thousand. So that's how the program was designed, and that's what we came up with. And um, it was really in the fall, early fall. Sorry, late summer, early fall, because it was after we realized two years in a row, we didn't deliver on what you asked for. And so we sat down and came up with a plan. But I will send it over, and I think I think that'll be clear.
Has anyone talked with you about the famous earn, learn, and play program that we had at Albion?
Yes.
That everyone remembers that. Yeah. So something like that.
It's similar. It would be similar.
Councilwoman Davis.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I have to say that that's a good call out as far as I'm trying to find the funding for that. Um, I think it's something that we've supported in our um. Strategic goals, as well as in the comprehensive plan, and how we discuss um getting those youth. That younger demographic to work. Um, and I think it will help us long-term here in the city of Albion if we can get more people. Out there at that earlier age, working in the workforce, so that they kind of get a grasp of um employment and, you know. Forming that discipline early enough, especially with the incentive from us, a little bit of help from us. And these employers here in town. So I think it'll be good support, definitely for all the local employers as well.
Hi. Do we have other budget items that we had questions about? Yeah, Mayor for temper.
Thank you. Virgie, you were gonna go over some other funds beginning that you.
Well, I wanted to just briefly.
Please.
Again, I plead to their credit today for early coming to my rescue, because um. I am uh, I am, I barely find myself coming and going right now. So. Um, he did some deep dives and came up with some better numbers than I than I may have had. So um. And I appreciate that he was able to do that. I'm. I am grateful to be as busy as I am, but wow, does it make it crazy sometimes. So I'm just looking. Well, maybe, do you have, you have my, you know, my budget? Maybe we traded a minute ago. Uh, well, yeah, um, so so I had prepared a lot of change, yeah. So. Um, so again, very grateful for the assistance here, because I um. I had some things that weren't as punitive as Dave had. So on the brownfield, um. The brownfield plan, uh, this was, I think it's your page one of one. Um. The numbers that Dave has produced, um, we went over these and uh the twenty twenty four projection and the. Twenty twenty five requested are much more accurate than mine were. Mine were still estimates. So he did a nice job of calculating the actual numbers, and these are all relative to property taxes. And it's very critical for him, because it ties into the DDA. So, you know, it's very important that this is as accurate as possible. My numbers were. Off, and so he did a nice job correcting those. So I appreciate that. So I would say we would go with Dave's version of the city. Uh, the city version, Dave's version for the budget for the B R A, and there really shouldn't be any more changes. So that would be. Um, a much appreciated improvement. And then skipping over EDC, because that's where all the excitement is. Um, going back to the um. Tiffa budget, um. The uh. The projections for twenty twenty four um that I did, um, he made some corrections again, and the revenue to bring it more in line. His his one seventy two oh seventy, for example, in the local stabilization. Was probably the exact number that came in, and I I I made a mistake and put the wrong number. And uh, again, with um, um. We're grateful for the sale of fixed assets. I was very appreciative that Dave was able to put that number in to the projection and keep it in the projection. Because we're closing on that transaction this week after four years. So that's a four-year transaction. I've never had a piece of property take four years to sell, but. I I find myself learning all kinds of new things. So that that number is much more, I appreciate him putting that back in. Um, the, so again, his twenty twenty four Tiffa numbers would be right on. Uh, the twenty twenty five, everything agrees here, except I had. I had projected or budgeted um a hundred thousand dollars, because we're selling last three properties out in the in in the industrial park. But I don't have a signed purchase agreement, so I believe that is gonna be taken out. So that is a revenue that we do rely on, because that that's one way that we do make money, is selling our current properties. But I've, I understand now that that will not be able to be in. So um if that budget will be amended, if we are able to sell those properties, I would, I think is what I'm understanding. So for Tiffa, again, thank you so much for the work done there. And then again, for uh the revolving loan fund. Um, you know, great job helping to to cover me on that, because um, again, just, I was kind of working off of estimates. Um. So I was real proud of myself for getting this done, but um since it's not accurate, it doesn't really, doesn't really help us do it. So. It's great that Dave was able to um come come through and um do the adjustments to the revolving loan fund. So very much appreciate. Um, that um on those other three funds. So and then I think the EDC will just work together to sort out the the um. The grants we have been awarded and and make sure that we're um being able to finalize. So it's pretty much. Um, appreciate Dave putting this together, because that really gives you a different feel. So and then we'll just give the feedback to the board. Um, because I don't think they vote on this again. I think they'll just be told this is what they have to work. So again, thank you so much. It's very helpful. And um I'll keep the stretch budget for them, because they need to know what we're trying to accomplish. And if we have a win, we'll come back to uh administration and see if it's a good time for us on the memo. So that's all I really have. So thank you.
And a council member have um questions?
Just a comment. I was gonna say what you said, but um. I I think, yeah, you're gonna have to keep that stretch budget or forecast or whatever you want to call it. Thankfully, you have people that would have that stuff. Just have it dovetail in and then make changes as we, I mean, it makes sense, especially with development organization. Good sense.
Public comment. If there's anybody in the gallery that would like to stand and address council, we may do so at this time.
Nidia Wolf, four oh nine Irwin Avenue. Uh, it came to the attention of both my husband, Jim Wolf, and myself that um. We, that uh the zoning for the property at one sixteen East Erie had not been done years ago. But I wanted to correct that. Uh, we. Paid the the city of Albion uh seventy five dollars in October of twenty, or October twenty eighth of ninety four. For a zoning amendment for our property. And so uh whatever we read was erroneous. That we had not, that they said we had not uh done that, but we did. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Want to introduce myself. Um, I work with Virgie and the rest of the EDC. Um, I'm Lisa Moore. I'm with LKF Marketing. I had the pleasure of living in Albion for four years at Albion College and. Been in the other city. We've worked with other companies in Albion in the past in the, or in industrial side. But um. What I've seen from the EDC and from Virgie is a lot of tenacity to do a lot of work that. Um, um, a very new staff or a very small staff that was growing and a lot of interns. I see a lot of training and education. Um, that Virgie is passing down. I think there's a lot of opportunity happening in Albion right now. Um, that we maybe haven't seen in a while. So I appreciate everything that everyone's trying to do to get the budgets in order. I really hope that everything can come through, so we can realize what's the potential for Albion again. Um, I haven't lived here for more than twenty years, but what I experienced when I was here was something great. And I know there's a lot of potential to. Revitalize and show the character that this small town has. And as someone who grew up in a very small town, that one business changed it. I grew up in elegant, so Perrigo is the thing that a lot of people worked Perrigo, and we need the supporting businesses and all of that. Um, I see a lot of similarities here. So I encourage you and hope that those grants can come through, and we can make some great progress, because our job at LKF is really. We are not about corporate marketing. What we want to do is see communities thrive and see businesses make change in communities and. Support the whole thing. It's not, it's not about pretty pictures for us, it's about functionality. And I see a lot of. Commonalities of how Virgie and her team are kind of trying to move through Albion to make it not just a pretty picture, but something that's functional. And improve the employment and just all the things that are happening here. So I appreciate the time. But um and all the work you're doing on the budget, so hopefully we can continue to make strides and show everyone what they may be missing when they drive by the highway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to stand and address council? Councilmember comments? Mayor become French?
Yes, thanks, everybody. Think we're gonna, this will be easy. Um, and I agree with everything you said. Um. We are um forever on the cusp, and the work that we've done the last two years has been really astounding. So I look forward to it. Plus, making those budget amendments, those grants come in.
Anywhere councilor can. You have a motion to adjourn?
So.
So I'm for it. My favor say ayes.
Alright.
We did adjourn seven thirty three P M. It's good for being here.
See you, CJ. Hope you're feeling better.